Want to call to order the regular meeting of the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, February 28th, 2023 here in Coachella. And let me do our introductory remarks, COVID remarks, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CVWD's Coachella office and via Zoom. AB 361 suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, allowing district board members to participate in person or by video conference. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda. The meeting is streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. For public comment, members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or on the agenda will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. And if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature so that we know you want to make And then we will have director, at least one director, attending remotely, so I'll make sure to call on any remote directors and we will, so that they have an opportunity to participate, and we will do everything by roll call vote, at least while we have a remote director. Yep, okay. And why don't you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Thank you. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson will be arriving in a few minutes, and we'll note his time for the record.
Thank you. En route to being here in person. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
Taking a picture around the room? No, sir. Not that's been brought to my attention.
Nor mine. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time? And we'll also look on Zoom.
We do have, yes, Mr. President. It looks like we have a few individuals. We'll just go in the order that I saw them come up. The first individual will be Kim Floyd. I'll go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kim Floyd.
Kim.
I'm speaking for the Sierra Club. I'm the conservation chair for the local Sierra Club chapter, and I'm speaking on Item 8A in opposition.
Oh.
On your agenda this morning, you plan to decide whether to enter into an agreement with the Cadiz Company to deliver water to the Torres Martinez Tribe and the Salt and Sea Authority. I urge you to decline to enter that agreement. The Torres Martinez Tribe and the Salt and Sea Authority do need a reliable source of safe water, and they need it urgently. Cadiz, however, is not that source. The Cadiz Corporation faces insurmountable hurdles at the state and federal levels that mean its chances of actually delivering water that it's promised is essentially zero. That means if CVWD agrees to this partnership, your agency will be pledging to lead those communities in need down a fruitless path that provides no new water, but does aid and abet Cadiz's efforts to rebrand itself as something other than a doomed speculative venture. California communities are in a water crisis. We can't afford to waste time on blind alleys like the Cadiz Project. Voting to partner with Cadiz would be a deceptive and cruel action. Please vote no on this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. And then I do have two other individuals. The next individual is John Monson. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Now, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to confirm you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be able to speak to you this morning. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is John Monson, and I'm a longtime desert protection activist, and I do a great deal of work in water policy. I wanted to offer a comment also on Item 8A on your agenda, on the issue of the proposed public-private partnership with the Cadiz Corporation. I urge you to vote no. As you may know, Cadiz has been prevented from exporting fossil fuel, fossil water from the Mojave Desert by state law, SB 307, which requires that state agencies confirm that exports will not harm desert's, the desert's natural and cultural resources. Cadiz has said publicly that no company could meet that standard. What's more, as a result of recent court decisions, Cadiz must undergo stringent NEPA review, stringent NEPA review before it can obtain any federal permits for the project. Cadiz is responding to this situation with an aggressive PR campaign, decide to persuade investors that its doomed project is still viable. It is claiming falsely that it is a social justice organization whose mission is to help under-resourced communities. In that light, a vote in favor of Cadiz isn't a neutral offer to help convey water. It's a show of support for Cadiz cynical ploy to use frontline communities as a cover for its doomed water mining project to keep their business going another week, another month, another year. Those communities deserve better. You deserve better. I ask you to vote against the agreement in Item 8A, and I appreciate the chance to comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monson. Our third speaker is Mr. Luke Basuto. And I have unmuted you, and you have three minutes, sir.
Could you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, there, yeah, and thank you for this opportunity to comment in opposition to Item 8A as well. My name is Luke Basuto, and I am the California Desert Program Manager for the National Parks Conservation Association, based just up the hill in Joshua Tree, California. Though I work and live in Joshua Tree, California, I grew up in Barstow, California, which in many ways could be a sister city to the frontline community you serve there in the Coachella Valley. Folks like me who grew up in places like these are pretty used to people coming in from the outside, promising help, but who really only have their own agendas in mind at the end of the day. That's what this Cadiz offer of water smells like to me. Every day I work with communities of color, including Native organizations, to protect the California desert. People understand that their future and their cultural survival is tied up in making sure that the desert isn't destroyed just so that a handful of large corporations and investors can accumulate more wealth. SB 307, the state law that keeps Cadiz from plundering ancient desert aquifers, came into law after Southern California environmental justice communities came together to demand its passage. My organization partnered with the Native American Land Conservancy to stop the Trump administration from giving Cadiz illegal favors that would have destroyed irreplaceable cultural resources. We won that case. Cadiz knows that the only way that it can stay alive for another fiscal year is to try and sow division among frontline communities. That's what the company is trying to do. And today, Cadiz is asking the Coachella Valley Water District for help. I urge you not to play Cadiz's game. Please stand up for the frontline communities that you serve and say no to working with Cadiz. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What else?
And I don't see any other raised hands. If there is somebody else on the line, please use the raise hand feature.
And we'll call again when items comes up, just to be sure.
Yeah, we will.
I don't see any additional speakers on the line.
Okay, thank you. So that would conclude public comment for now. Appreciate the input. Let's see, we have employee recognitions. Let me get this up. Sorry.
I see Rigo, I don't see Kevin and Don, wasn't supposed to be here.
Okay, good. So we have two anniversaries and a retirement. The anniversaries are Rigo Castro with 20 years and Kevin Mendoza with 20 years, and then the retirement is Don Wilcox with 12 years, and I believe Rigo's the only one attending, so we will read.
So special.
That. We will read, there's a little story here. Rigo Castro started with CVWD in 2003 when a friend recommended him to work for the district. Twenty years later, he's now crew chief in the auto shop far from where he started. After graduating from high school and not sure what career path to take, Rigo recognized he had a passion for the automotive field. He enrolled in the UTI Automotive Program in Rancho Cucamonga, where he graduated at the top of his class. Soon after hearing that CVWD was a great place to work and having a wife and baby girl at home, Rigo applied and landed a position in domestic water. During his time in domestic water, he kept his eye for an auto shop position and a year and a half later got his opportunity as an auto shop technician one. Rigo has been in the auto shop throughout his career, working his way through the ranks to his current position as an auto shop crew chief. Auto shop supervisor Matt Lautzenheiser said, "When we were both technicians, I got paired with Rigo over 15 years ago on numerous large projects and always enjoyed and considered it a privilege to work with him. He has an outstanding work ethic paired with a great understanding of the automotive field." Rigo has earned the respect of his peers as a technician and is a great leader for the new generation coming in. He leads by example, always helping his fellow coworkers, and plays a huge part in the district's fleet services success. So congratulations, Rigo, and come on up. We have a thing.
Are we going to take a picture?
Yeah, of course. It's not real unless we take a picture.
Man, you're way too young.
Zoom, I'm going to practice.
You don't want to give a speech?
You get a comment time here. You can, you know, you get, they ask you to keep it below three minutes.
Oh, three minutes, oh, yeah. It's been a pleasure. Twenty years here is flown by. I remember the first day and all the hard ones, and, but just about every single day has been a blast. Still learning everything, every day we're learning something new. Dad taught me something this morning.
Dad?
Yeah, yeah. He made sure that I took notes. This is all I need. No, it's been a pleasure. Thankfully, I've been able to, like Matt said, work with them for such a long time, and we've all been together here for such a long time, and knowing everybody, it's been a blast. I think, I hope everybody enjoys their job here as much as I have and as much as I still do. Like I said, I think I could probably do another 20 years. Thank you very much.
Twenty more years, put that on the calendar.
Yeah, in the military, we used to get people to sign contracts, apparently. We don't do that here.
Twenty more years.
Yeah, he said he was ready for it.
Let's do it.
I do solemnly swear.
So the consent calendar, Items 6A through I, up for consideration?
John, I have a question, please, on Item I, and I think this might be maybe Kerry or Jim.
I think it's fair. Why don't we pull that item?
Let's go ahead and do that.
Yeah, because I was thinking similar.
Okay.
Okay.
So with that pulled, I'd move approval of the balance of the item number six, the consent calendar A through H.
Okay, I'll second that. And we're going to do a, I guess I should check in with Vice President Estrada before we did the motion in second. Are you all right with that? Directors? Yeah, okay. All right, so roll call vote, please.
Make sure my mic is up. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Past 5:00. Okay, so 6I is our, how we did for the six months, first six months of the fiscal year?
Yeah.
And I do, I do have Rick Aragon, our finance director, so let me just move him over to a panelist so that he is able to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
And we'll just wait for him to...
Let me know. Should I wait? Should I go ahead?
Hey, Rick, can you hear us? Are you on the line? And Rick, you're muted, so if you could just...
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Okay, perfect. He's on the line. Thank you.
Appreciate it. So really, simple, quick question. So I noticed in the, in the report and the summary of the expenditures for the capital improvement program that we were at something like 39% of expenditures, which seemed really low. And I know I talked with Jim and with Kerry about our actual performance completion numbers for the year. Can somebody comment on that? Is that number we expect to go up?
Yes, we expect it to go up.
Thirty-nine? Up to what, though?
Well, it's hard to say. There are still log chain issues.
Yes, we do expect it to go up. So those, that, the number in the GM report would be through January or through December?
This one is through January.
Through January, yep. So usually it ramps up towards the end of...
I'm sorry, this question is on the performance budget to actual, so it's only through December.
Okay, through December, yeah. So that's like halfway through the year?
Mm-hmm.
And right now, we're doing our CIP, and we're looking at our projections for the end of this year, and right now, we're looking around the high 80s, maybe 90?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. I knew it was going to go up, so that's good to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Great. You know, another, I don't know, I don't understand, I haven't looked at cash flow on water purchases, but that was one of the items that was pretty below where we were tracking. And I guess I'm a little curious, is that going to, before the end of the fiscal year, is that number going to plod back up again? I don't know how we know that. Robert, do you know that?
I guess I can't even have the bright and narrow conversation.
We're just looking at, we're just looking at our six months actual to budget on the, for the fiscal year, and I, the water purchases were way down compared to what we... Yeah. There was, you know, which was one of the reasons we had a positive, a favorable variance.
Right, right. And I think we're working with finance right now to get that reconciled. I think, you know, last week's announcement of the, you know, the Table A allocation going to 35% will help, you know, cut into that.
Yeah, that would cut into it before the end of June, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would.
We would pay those before.
It should, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll get some more details for you, but I think that's the biggest, you know, one of the biggest drivers for why.
Is that the six million dollar variance? Yeah, so through fiscal, through the same period of the year before, we were down about $6 million, a little more than $6 million, which is 20%. Yeah.
Okay. We'll get some more details.
Yeah, we'll actually probably blow through the budget on that. The biggest things is supplies and services is what's $8 million over budget, but I looked in there for exactly why, but it's hard to find.
Good morning, David.
Morning. And not positive either, but we're bringing masks for fun. So David Lacy from finance, I think the simple answer really with the water purchase is this year, we don't have any of the Rosedale Rio Bravo purchases at the same time that we had for last year, so that's the biggest portion of that variance.
Right, but then with the state water project being 35, going to potentially a higher number, that would probably push those numbers up compared to last year. It depends on what we budgeted.
Yeah, don't we budget like, it's weird because the fiscal year is half of one water year and half of another water year.
Yeah, it makes it a little more difficult just because of that, so the calendar year with the state water project, but what we do is basically budget those, but what we're looking at as far as the actuals is in column four and for Q2 for the prior fiscal year, we basically expensed those purchases that we had for Rosedale that didn't happen this year, so you're seeing that as kind of variance between year over year.
Right. Do we budget 100% state water project?
No. The allocation that we have done basically for this year is we basically had a 5% allocation for the first half of the year and then a 50% allocation for the second half of the year. So we normally do that, about 50% allocation.
You might be right on the money, then.
Could be close, I'm sure.
You're going to be right on the money. 50%.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Thanks, David. And if I may, Mr. President, while I have some finance folks around, I'd like to introduce Carla Romero, who is our new controller.
Oh.
She comes to us from a municipal background, most recently from Brawley, but before that, she was with India in there somewhere. I don't know exactly the progression, but we're very happy to have her. And she just started work on Monday.
Nice.
So we don't expect her to answer any questions here today.
What's the onboarding process like?
Can somebody explain the supplies and services being so over budget, is that just a, sometimes this is just a matter of, of timing?
David, do you have anything you want to say about supplies and services? I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that the log chain is still a problem, there's inflation. I know we're having difficulty with chemicals. There are not that many suppliers, and so we're really, we're really kind of have to pay what they, what they ask.
Are you looking at the all funds summary? I'm sorry, I wasn't sure which line item we're looking at on that.
Supplies and services under the expenses.
Yeah.
It would have been page three.
So 48% of budget? You mean as far as why it's under at this point, or?
Oh, I'm reading it wrong, I apologize. I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it, I'm comparing it to last year's.
Okay.
Being so much higher than last year.
Yeah, so at least as a portion of budget at this point, you know, with, obviously we've had expenses with inflation and things like that as well, chemicals, things that do go under the supplies and services as well, but we are within budget about 48% of what we expected at this point.
Yeah. I mean, overall, it looks like performance is somewhat favorable largely because of the capital being at 39%.
Yeah, I mean, overall, operating expenses, at least at the halfway point, you know, are about 43% of budget, so we're on track at this point.
Yeah, everything looked decent. All right, is there, so we're going to...
Thanks again, David.
Of course.
We're going to, we're going to accept the report, right? It's an action item?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move approval. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada? Vice President Estrada?
Aye, I'm trying to mute myself. Aye.
Okay, thank you. I was a yes. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Past 5:00. We have three items on the action calendar. The first one is 8A, which we've already heard some public comment on. I wanted to, I guess, why don't we, there's a small presentation on this.
There's not, I did not prepare a presentation. We have had previous discussion on this. We signed off on a letter of intent last April. This letter of agreement does not substantially or materially change the terms that were included. Within that, we have made some minor edits based on review by both staff and some board members. Again, we are not responsible for negotiating the conveyance, the acceptance into a conveyance system, or paying for any charges for this water, should it become available, either through the state water project or the Colorado River Aqueduct. Cadiz will have to negotiate those acceptances and conveyance rights with the state and with metropolitan. We are only committing to allowing the water, should it be accepted by those agencies into the Coachella Canal, and it is my intent, at least at this point, to charge for operations and maintenance, wheeling rate for that water to be conveyed to its ultimate destination within our service area.
Can I ask you a question? Has the Salt and Sea Authority approved this?
I don't believe they have, I did not listen to their last meeting. I don't know that they have approved it yet. I believe they have been given a copy of this, the same copy that you are seeing now, but I don't know for a fact whether they have approved. I know they're excited about it.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we be after them, not before them, since this is a direct benefit for them?
That would be your preference, sir. I don't think there's a particular hierarchy here.
Well, since the water is, they're, they're going to receive some of this water, I mean, or includes them, it would be nice that they want it before we say it's okay. Right, that's, that's all, that's the way, that's the way I'm looking at it.
I'm pretty sure they want it. It just becomes whether or not we're willing to convey it as to whether they ever get it. If we decide not to convey it, then there's no way for them to receive it.
Can I ask you another question? Is there a provision that says that if Cadiz does not perform going forward, that this, all of this...
There's no penalties that I'm aware of, if that's what you're asking. We're under no obligation to make up any deficit. If Cadiz is not able to perform, it's not upon the water district to provide the water that they cannot. There's no obligations there for us, there's no penalties should Cadiz not be able to perform moving forward.
Yeah, if I may, your water council, Steve Abbott, is the one that has reviewed this agreement, but I believe if you look at Section 1.2, the language has been added regarding, "Agreement shall not be construed to require CVWD to assume responsibility for the conveyance, storage, or exchange of non-traditional water beneficial uses, including with the tribe or the authority."
President, can I get a chance to make a comment?
Go ahead.
So I just, I just want to add that this, this seems to be kind of a follow-up to a previous conversation that we've already had related to this concept, and it's something that has also been vetted through the Salt and Sea Authority. The Salt and Sea Authority, as you're aware, has been supportive of this concept, and it's also been something that's been vetted through the Torres Martinez Council. And so I think Jim, what Jim said is correct, we're simply agreeing to feed the conveyance if water is available, so that that water can be moved. That doesn't mean that, that we play any other role other than that, I think, and, and related to all the comments that were made about environmental process, laws, and legislation that, that would perhaps create challenges for the project, I think all those still need to be resolved, and they need to be resolved by Cadiz. And, and until they do so, and they actually create the water, then, then, then we would be in a position to try to move that water for the benefit of, of the community, including the Salt Sea. So I think, you know, we don't, we don't really, I don't have a better way to say this, but I don't think we have anything to lose. If anything, I think we have a chance here to, to benefit from, from a potential water supply that might be created. If, if the project finds a way to, to, to resolve all the issues that it needs to resolve, and so that's kind of my, my take on the project.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to approve 8A?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve item number 8A.
I'll take it.
So there's a motion and a second.
Do we want to check for any comments on that?
We could, yeah, are there any other individuals wishing to comment on this item before we vote?
For those on Zoom...
For those on Zoom, if you'd like to address this particular comment, please use the raise hand feature. And I do not see any, Mr. President.
All right, just give it a second. And roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Pass 5-0.
8B is the design for the parking lot rehab phase two.
Good morning. Again, yes, so this is to approve and authorize the General Manager to execute a task order with Albert A. Webin Associates in the amount of $113,671 to design parking lot rehabilitation for the Palm Desert Campus, the operations parking lot, the area between the new critical support building and the existing, oh, no, I'm sorry, west of the critical support building. It's where the solar panels were installed, so we're waiting for that, and the parking structure for that to be complete before we went in and started this project. So it, it was budgeted for this year. The design was budgeted for this year, and the construction is budgeted next year. Happy to answer any other questions.
On this picture, are the solar panels there?
No.
Okay, so this is old picture?
Yeah.
The solar panels are installed?
They're installed, yeah. They're the, yeah, they're the shade structure for the parking, yes.
And so, and then everything else that's in darker asphalt color was what we did
Previous.
Previous two years.
Director Bianco, your mic, please. Those online, thank you.
Okay.
Right. It's old and cracking.
It's old and cracking, and the drainage situation needs to be corrected so that it, it slopes the correct way and drains properly. 29 years old.
29.
And this is just for the design. We'll come back once we have the design with an engineer's estimate prior to bidding the project, so you have another opportunity to tell us if you want us to do it or not.
Yeah.
It's a general district project.
Understood. Okay. Do we have an estimate of what it's gonna cost to do the project?
I think it's in the high 700, 800 range, maybe even a million.
Under a million?
Yeah.
How many times have we redone the, the parking lot here in Coachella?
Oh, gosh, I don't know. I've looked at my...
I wouldn't expect.
Friends in the audience.
Here comes Stan.
But not too long ago.
I don't think it's been.
It's not been that long.
So we tried to extend the life, as you would imagine. We just did a slurry in both locations, absent this part, to try to extend the life of the pavement. But there are cracks in this area, two inches wide, so there's no recovery except to go down, to subgrade and bring it back up and do it right, and it'll last another 20, 30 years, provided we slurry and look after it. But this area is the worst part in the district on any campus whatsoever, so it's probably prudent that we do it at this point in time, so.
Is that a result of all the heavy equipment, the heavier trucks?
I mean, pavement life anywhere is typically, you know, less than 15 years, for sure. So the fact that we got, what'd you say, 28?
29.
29. I, I think we did quite well. Honestly, I think it's more than worth the effort in this, yeah, there is a lot of heavy equipment going in this yard constantly, dump trucks and other things, so. But I, I do think that, you know, we don't have a choice at this point, so.
Right.
Maybe next meeting we can drive through there.
Yeah, right.
Measure the cracks?
Not measure the cracks, but just look at it.
Fair enough. All right, is there a motion to approve 8B?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
This is simple enough. Let's, let's do roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada. You're muted. Director Estrada.
Aye.
Thank you. Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pass 5-0. Okay. And then 8C, a little revision to our procurement policy and adding a little bit of headroom for our General Manager to approve projects.
Good morning, President Powell, Vice President Estrada, and board members. I'm here today to request the General Manager's authority to be increased from 75,000 to 100,000, and the thresholds for competitive bidding be increased as outlined in the Agenda staff report. The last increase in the General Manager's authority was approved six years ago in 2017 from 50,000 to 75,000. In addition, I'm requesting the thresholds for competitive bidding be increased to help keep pace with significant, and that's an understatement, inflationary pressures the district has experienced over the last several years. These increases are in line with industry standards and practices for similar public agencies in California. The last increase on these thresholds were 10 years ago in 2013. Allowing these increases will minimize unnecessary delays in procuring goods and services significant to the district operation but considered low in cost compared to the district's overall $481 million budget. All contracts exceeding the General Manager's authority will still require approval prior to the award of the procurement division. Will continue to ensure policy limits are adhered to. Currently, procurement is working on updating the entire procurement policy, but found it would be more advantageous to have these increases in place as they affect all areas of the policy throughout. We will be bringing this to the board later this year. Any questions?
Thanks, Bryce.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it. I'll move approval.
I thought the item was well presented in the, in the written, too, with the, the surveys and everything. It was really...
Thank you.
Well done. Makes it easier.
I do want to say we've had a struggle, all of us at the district.
Because it's, because it's too low.
On procuring goods and services in the last few years.
Oh, because everything's going up and...
Extremely.
Supply chain's broken.
Yes, and all of our staff has worked together and been able to work around these because of what we need to get and what we can't get, so.
Yeah, understood. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
We had a motion.
Motion?
A motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Aguilar. All right, roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Bryce. And Al.
Yeah, that's good. 9A written communications, we have, I guess, two.
Correct, and they were distributed, it was a standout.
Resolved and pending, okay. Appreciate those. Board member general comments. Why don't we start with Vice President Estrada?
Let me see. I don't, well, the only comment I have is that I think we have a scheduled roundtable conversation that seems like we, we've been having them quarterly. I don't know if it's, I don't know the frequency, but it's, it's a roundtable that's been put together. Folks include the EPA, State Water Board, the county, CBWD, the tribe, DIA, the Assembly Member's Office, and it's a meeting that's centered around the issue related to the Oasis Mobile Home Park on Avenue 70, and some of the challenges that, that folks are experiencing there. So we have another meeting scheduled, I believe on March 6th, and so that's gonna be another pretty involved meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Director Nelson?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, just on this, on the weather and the snow issues, I usually do. Colorado River just got over 100% of the April 6th average, so it's sitting at 102%. It's 125% average for this date, which were up to about, you know, doesn't matter at this point, but about 8 million acre feet of runoff into Lake Powell, which is fantastic. That beats 3.5 and the 3s the last, in the last three or four years. So that's, that's good stuff, and just remember, there's 9 million acre feet of use in the lower basin, so it doesn't quite cover that.
But we're getting more.
But we're getting more.
That's right, we're getting more.
We're getting more. And speaking of getting more, you know, the state's sitting at 156% of snowpack of the April 1st average, 180% year-to-date, and it's a little bit less in, in Northern California, where the state water project supplies come from in Lake Orville, and it's 124% of the April 1st average. So, all good news, still coming more. March is forecasted to be wet, so we could get a couple atmospheric rivers actually coming in, which should be interesting on top of the snowpack, so we'll, we'll see. It's very positive news.
Yeah, good. For once.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. John? No comments. Okay. So, yeah, I had an interesting conversation, and I don't know if this is something we're gonna do or not, but it's, it's interesting. These folks are producing a series for PBS on water in California, based on the book, was it called The Great Thirst? Oh, my gosh, now I'm gonna forget the name of the book. I think that's the name of the book. And it's like a five or six-part series, telling the story of water in California. Pretty nicely produced, high-quality deal. But they wanted to possibly add in CBWD, something we'll probably need to talk about with our communications staff and see how that might work. But, but he also mentioned another, this is Tom Mount, another thing that he does, a podcast, and Take Fountain? It's not what I wrote down, but I was just searching it. It's based in Rancho Mirage, and it's pretty interesting, but he mentioned that he's looking for topics. They talk about show business and film and television, but they probably wouldn't mind talking about water. So, because we have such an interesting story, you know. Follow up with me, I can maybe try to connect you. Yeah. Anyways, it's nice to have people interested in what we do. I think that's it. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. Meeting reports, Director Estrada, I know you're gonna be heading, well, you still have 15 minutes, and we're probably okay. Okay, why don't we take it from the top. Colorado River Board.
So on February 15th, the Colorado River Board was held in Coachella at the Palm Desert Facility. It was well-attended, and I'd just like to thank Jim, the staff, especially Sylvia, and your team for putting together the full lunch and the room, and, you know, everybody complimented as far as how well they felt taken care of. And, you know, Olivia's not here, but as far as the tour goes, everyone was really complimentary and excited about the tour of the replenishment ponds and the lab building and so forth. So it was, it was a good day. We obviously, you know, had the meeting as well, and, and it was, you know, a little bit more upbeat because of the hydrology, but also because the Six Basin State Alternative Proposal for the Response to the Bureau's Supplemental Environmental Impactist...
Statement.
The SEIS is, is not gaining a lot of traction, and there, I think there's a, a thinking out there that, you know, California's proposal is a little more realistic, and, and so that's kind of making the rounds. And so I think that, that, the group was a little more upbeat about that, and that's, that's all I had.
Good, yeah. Yeah, it was nice. It's nice to have people here.
Yeah.
See what we do.
Yeah.
Good meeting. 17th, we had the Finance Committee meeting.
Director Aguilar is there in person.
Okay, thank you, Vice President. Yeah, so we had our meeting with staff to largely discuss the proposed changes to the, the policies that were approved by the board a few minutes ago. We had a good discussion on all the recommendations. We did have one minor administrative change that was incorporated in the recommendations, and so we appreciate that. And we also, of course, heard from our investment advisors, and as, as is expected, our returns are, generally speaking, above our benchmarks, but still not too good in the 1% range. So I guess we should be grateful for that. And that was about it.
I agree.
Very good. Salt and Sea Authority Board meeting, 23rd?
Yeah, that was, that was actually my first, my first meeting since being appointed to the, to the authority. There was a lot of information, a lot of reports. There was several presentations that were made by community, by nonprofits that were doing community engagement work. And, and, and clearly, they're doing a lot of outreach, which is good, about proposed plans moving forward. I think the general sentiment of the board was that the outreach is really good, but in fact, I actually made the comment that we're creating expectations in the community, so we need to start delivering results. Somebody actually mentioned that Director Bianco, they missed having him there because he's always asking where, you know, what's next, what's happening, and, and so you were, your name was invoked at the meeting. There was one, there was one thing in particular I did want to mention. There is a, the state representative presented some information regarding a new bill that has been introduced by Senator Padilla. Assemblyman Garcia is actually the co-author, and you all have probably already heard about it. It's Senate Bill 583, and it's designed to create a new Salt and Sea Conservancy organization. Now, there's no substance yet to the bill, just by title only, and I think it's a bill that we really need to watch pretty carefully. It could have some potential benefits, but there, I think personally, there are some potential concerns that we need to be aware of. So that Senate Bill 583, and I think our legislative folks probably need to keep an eye on that, too. And those are my comments.
Thank you.
And I have some comments to follow up on that. We, I, I did bring up, I did bring up the fact that I have received an email from a gentleman named Tom Seppson. He's from Eco Media Math Compass, and he has shared a, a model with me that, that carries the Colorado River drop 55 years out into the future. I think it tries to use some of the Bureau's conservation numbers as part of that model. And, and so we, we did continue to make a call for the need to get some sort of, just, you know, we, we, we're still questioning the, the models as it relates to what exactly the impact to the Salt and Sea is going to be based on the, on the numbers that are conserved. We, we think in general, don't feel comfortable that, that it, that it pencils out to the 6,000 or 8,000 additional acre, acre, acres of ex- the 6,000 or 8,000 additional acre, uh, acre, acres of exposed playa, so we're, we're looking to try to get more information on that. I think there's been, uh, also, uh, a suggestion by the Executive Director that, that the Salt and Sea Authority hired, uh, its, its own, uh, engineering firm that can, that can, uh, take some of this information that, that, uh, the various agencies are using to, to make projections, so that we can run our own projections and, and kind of, uh, have a little bit more control as to, as to what the scenarios are. And so, uh, that, that was something that I think resonated with, with a lot of folks. Related to, uh, the Conservancy, um, I think that a lot of us agree on the dies that, that we, we needed to make sure that we weren't creating more layers of government that made, uh, the process even more complex. We already have a complex issue out there with multiple jurisdictions, whether it's the state, the feds, uh, different counties, the tribes, different water agencies. And so it's, it's already a, a pretty complicated jurisdictional matter. And, uh, you know, just right now, we, I, I, I personally don't see how a Conservancy would, 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 would play any, uh, beneficial role. I think what, what, uh, what we need at the Salt and Sea Authority is, is a way to, uh, create more funding, a way to, uh, pay for the O and M that projects, uh, are gonna have to have. And, and so if, if this is a way to do that, then I think it's a good thing, but if it's just more red tape, uh, it's something that we need to oppose. And those, those are my comments.
Thank you. Twenty-seventh, Farm Water Coalition.
That, uh, was a meeting yesterday up in Sacramento. It, uh, primarily held on Zoom, um, and, um, there was a transition of, um, of leadership there. As you know, we had some elections, uh, as of late, and so very longtime Directors, uh, Gene Lundquist, uh, 29 years from the Kern County Water Agency.
Director Nelson, I apologize, your mic is off. Thank you.
As well as Dan Vink, um, who had been a longtime Director, um, and they were both in attendance. Norma Galindo had, was a, a short-timer there, and she also, uh, left because of the, she's no longer IID Director. She had been replaced by Gina Docstetter, who was on the line and participated, uh, quite a bit. We, uh, are, um, doing a fair amount of work in the Imperial, um, County and Colorado River Basin. Mike Wade's, uh, put a lot of attention towards that and been involved with, um, IVH2O and with Imperial and myself, uh, talking, uh, getting Colorado River perspective. So, uh, I think there's been some good work there. And that's about it.
Good, thank you. A few additional meetings, I had three, actually. I'll do mine and then we'll go to the others. February 16th, uh, Director Bianco and I were part of a meeting with, um, 29 Palms and City of India La Quinta and some other folks from the feds. I don't know if we need to say anything more about that. Then, uh, let's see, I met on the 23rd with, uh, Scott Hunter, and, and then right after that, with our General Manager to go over our, um, compensation and benefits update for the General Manager. And then, uh, on the 24th is the day I had that call, it was almost an hour, with Tom Mount talking about how we might participate in the, uh, in their PBS series. Any others?
Yeah, I had a couple. I'm not sure if I reported on this, uh, at our 14th meeting, but on February 10th, I participated in a Cal- California Caucus, uh, meeting, um, talking about, um, next steps in the negotiation process with the seven basin states. And then again, on February 21st, uh, the same type of meeting, uh, with, uh, contractors, uh, in California on the river. And then on February 23rd, um, I participated in the State Water Contractors, uh, Water Operations Call with DWR, uh, listening to their, um, justifications on the allocations of the 35%. And, um, it's interesting that they, they base their, um, decisions on the 99th percentile, uh, so they're pretty dang sure that they're gonna get 35%. But what they normally release on is the 90th percentile, which was 53%. So, uh, granted, uh, the first part of February was, uh, was actually well below normal until this last week. But, um, those forecasts were on the books. So, uh, you know, I think that, you know, looking towards that 50% is not unreasonable. But with, with that being said, in fact, there was no dis, there was discussion about Article 21 and the process of how it works and how you apply for it and so forth. So, um, at some point, Jim, um, I'd like to set up with, uh, with Robert or, or in, in, in the State Water Project team, because I, I don't know too much about it in terms of how Coachella participates or does not participate in Article 21. And, uh, so i- if I could just set something up, uh...
That's easy.
Yeah, so I think that's easy and, uh, like to get some information on that.
I think we do it on a year-by-year basis, but that's easy enough.
For sure, yeah. So, uh, you know, I, I think it's probably on the horizon. San Luis Reservoir, the state water project, uh, is 84% full of capacity. So, uh, you know, if we start getting additional runoff and, you know, that's easily can overtop and spill, uh, at San Luis, so, um, that's of interest to me, how Coachella deals with that, so, yeah. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any others? Let's, let's let Casla go, because I think he has to jump off.
Of course.
Go ahead, Casla.
Last, last Tuesday, I, I met with, uh, Woodward and Kern. They are a consultant firm that, that helps us with a lot of the grants that we're working on related to, uh, SRS grants, uh, for clean drinking water and sanitation projects. And, uh, one of their, one of, uh, well, a few, a few folks from their team were down in California for a conference, uh, here locally, and so they took the time to meet with staff. I was able to participate. And then, uh, I, I, I made some time to, uh, one of the consultants that, that's been involved with us takes care of a lot of our work, uh, via the internet, uh, with Zoom, and so she's, she's from out of town, she's from out of state, uh, but she's been doing a wonderful job. And so she, she was able to come down and so made some time to, uh, to take her, uh, on a tour, uh, of the eastern Coachella Valley. So I, I took her to Avenue 70, uh, to look at Oasis, I took her to Pier Street, I took her to Avenue 66. Um, I took her up and down, uh, Mecca Thermal Oasis, uh, just so that, uh, she could get a sense of what these projects mean and, and where they're located. And so I think that was, that was a good thing for us, uh, to do, and so, um, spent some time with, uh, with them. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. All right, John, go ahead.
Thank you, John. I just wanted to mention, I, I, on the 21st, I sat in on the California Natural Resources Agency's update on, um, on the water survey, California Water Survey results. Pretty much echoes everything that Peter's already, already mentioned. They did give kind of a preview of the new allocation coming out. They said it was gonna be modest and certainly was. And they talked about the governance water supply strategy as well, so that was interesting. And then on the 23rd, I did sit in, or actually, it was audio-only, on the, um, on the, uh, the hearing, the court hearing on the Canal 2 rates. And, uh, my takeaway was that Judge Reamer seems really interested in getting a settlement as soon as we can settle on some numbers to be inserted, so, um, that was it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to per, per DM for the meetings reported on?
I'll move to, um, page 13.
Second. Roll, if we still have Director Estrada. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Pass 5-0. Okay, good, General Manager report.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just for Director Estrada, the last meeting we had with EPA was back in May, uh, around May 25th, I think, of 2022. We do have, uh, as he referred, March 6th, we've got a new meeting, uh, out there at Torres Martinez Admin Facility, uh, from 3 o'clock to 7:00. We basically go out and talk about our CIP efforts, uh, in the East Valley. Uh, I also want to bring, uh, remind the Board that on March 9th, uh, Bureau of Reclamation will be in town. They'll arrive, start arriving at 8 o'clock at, uh, our, uh, complex here. Uh, there'll be some networking, uh, the event itself will be out at, uh, um, the Site 97.1, which is a section of the Coachella Canal, there'll be shuttle buses. The program begins at 10:30. Jackie Gould, who is the Lower Basin, uh, Director for Reclamation, will be the emcee. Commissioner Tooten will be there, she'll make remarks around, uh, 5 minutes to 11, 3 to 5 minutes. Tanya Torrio, the Assistant Secretary, will be here at 11:00. Peter Nelson will be making remarks. Congressman Raul Ruiz, uh, will also be making remarks. There'll be a presentation of a check, which is the loan that we have for irrigation, uh, projects out in the East Valley. Uh, and then there'll be a trip to a, uh, Coachella Valley farm. I'm not quite sure, uh, that this is entirely accurate. Yeah, it starts at 10:30 on-site out there at the canal. Uh, again, this is March 9th. These are, uh, the last update, uh, to the agenda we have, which was updated on January 10th, so there may have been changes. If we get, uh, I can send a copy of this to you, so you've at least got something. But, uh, I suspect it's probably pretty close to what's actually gonna happen. So that's March 9th. Uh, mid-March, we will, uh, no doubt, have another discussion about the Lake Kewee lease, which is still pending review at the county. Uh, as you recall, we are in our second extension. I fully expect there will be a third extension. Um, we also have, uh, Lafco ballot, uh, coming up. It's due back to Lafco on 3/27. We have a candidate, uh, that we are endorsing, uh, for the eastern area. Uh, that would be Vice President Estrada. Uh, we have pushed out, uh, a couple of, uh, at least one email, and I think there's a video that we're still finalizing, uh, which we'll attach to the next email that we send out. Um, we also, uh, in addition to, um, the plot on COVID cases that I had sent earlier to you just as a point of reference, uh, we currently have two qualifying cases, 422 recovered, two mortalities, two direct contacts, um, and three people off work. We have nine, uh, cases so far for the month of February, and that would conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Counsel report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As in the past, I just wanted to update you on the ever-increasing, uh, requirements on land use agencies, not the water district, but land use agencies to encourage accessory dwelling units and more housing in California. AB 2221, uh, which is in, has been signed, is, and is in part of the law, provides for land use agencies to designate areas wherein ADU may be developed. And they can include whether or not to have a area for ADUs based on whether there is enough water and sewer services to serve that area. Part of this requirement is now that the land use agency, city or county, respond to an application for an ADU within 60 days. And within that 60 days, if they are not going to approve the ADU based on a lack of water or sewer service, uh, then they need to consult with the local water district, being us, in terms of documentation as to whether or not there is service for the area. So we're not guaranteeing or providing any representations to water or sewer service, but it's one more link, uh, to land use agencies about whether or not there is water and sewer service and working with them in terms of their housing requirements. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any departmental reports today? Yes, oh, that's right.
We do have one, Andrea.
Oh, we made you guys wait this whole time. Thank you.
That's okay. Good morning, President Powell, members of the Board. My name is Andrea Schech, Communications Specialist and Chair of the Spark Committee, and I have with me Ed Tapia, uh, Domestic Crew Chief and Co-Chair. Spark's a committee made by employees for employees last year in April of 2022. The purpose of the committee is to share praise, appreciation, respect, and kindness. And the goal of Spark is to encourage and surprise employees in recognition and appreciate, and appreciation of their hard work. The committee meets monthly, and members collaborate and consider ways to make employees feel seen, recognized, and appreciated. Encourage employees to share accomplishment, accomplishments. Inspire employees to join the committee and/or provide feedback and ideas for the committee and, and our plans and our goals. Since its formation, Spark has organized multiple small appreciation events throughout the year, including Employee Appreciation Breakfast in Palm Desert and Coachella, we did that last spring. Summer E and E Pell's Breaks in Palm Desert and Coachella, I think we did that in like the dead of August, so that was, that was a nice, uh, retreat. Appreciation efforts at Halloween, the holiday season, and Valentine's Day. And, and on April 1st, 2023, an employee appreciation dinner, the first since December 2019. Reservations for the event close on March 16th. Committee members regularly receive thank-yous and positive feedback from employees after each appreciation effort, including encouragement to continue and some employees expressing interest in joining Spark. In less than a year, Spark has created a recognizable name for itself among CVWD employees and is excited to continue developing the committee's name, reputation, and efforts. And as you'll see in the audience, we have a few of our, our pins, I just lost my magnet. We're, we're, you know, noticed by our orange and purple, and I, I see you wore orange in support today, and I think Dan wore his purple.
But I never got a badge.
Are you an employee?
Depends who you ask.
That's, that's, uh, a little bit about Spark.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a magnet there somewhere.
I know, I lost it somewhere, I'll find it. Oh, I think I see it.
Yeah, see, they're already getting ready for us to get into the, uh, retail energy business, right? With a nickname like Spark.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Good.
Thanks very much, Andrea.
So, uh, we will recess to close session at this time to consider the items on the agenda, and following that, we will reconvene here to report out of a closed... We don't have anything to report, do we? They're sending it back to the thing? Okay, uh, the regular meeting is hereby reconvened, we do have one item to report. Sylvia will do that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. On item 13A, receipt of claim from Posse Robles Tank E. On a motion by Director Powell, second by Director Nelson, the Board took action to reject the claim as untimely and to have the, um, applicable notices sent to the claimant, the motion was approved 4 to 0. And that is all.
Thank you. And, uh, that concludes our meeting. We have no further business, so we are adjourned.